Okay, good evening, everyone. We're going to call our meeting to order. It's five, actually it's 5:32. So we're going to call our meeting to order tonight. And I'd like to welcome all of you, all you Rancho students and all of our leadership class. We have a roll call by City Clerk Kathy Valdez.
The records shall reflect that all members are present with the exception of Cody Campbell, who had a previous engagement.
Okay, and we're going to have a Pledge of Allegiance if you'll all rise, led by Councilwoman John Aguilera, and invocation by Reverend Frank Halleck, United Methodist Church of Vista.
Please join me in honoring our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Halleck. Oh, and he's not, so we're going to not have an invocation today. Okay, with the Brown Act, in accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And the next thing is the approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
Okay, and we didn't have a closed session today. So the next thing on our agenda are presentations. And we're going to have presentations to our, of certificates to our graduates of the City of Vista's Fall 2016 Leadership Academy. So I'm going to do that first. I'll come down there and do that. And then after that, I'm going to, we're going to invite the Vista Unified School District Superintendent Devon Vodichka to join me at the podium to accept a proclamation declaring November 28, 2016, to be a Vista Unified School District Day in the City of Vista. So first, we'll do the graduates and their presentation of their certificates, and then we'll have Dr. Vodichka come up. Okay, so I'm going to, the City of Vista is proud to present its 15th Vista Leadership Academy's graduating class. This academy provides insight to Vista residents on the city's operations and its many responsibilities and functions. Our first academy, conducted in 2007, was an overwhelming success, and every leadership academy has grown since then. And if you haven't done our Leadership Academy, I would just recommend that to anybody. It's very interesting to see all the different departments and how they operate in the city. And, you know, going to the jail, visiting that, the fire department, finance, all of it. It's, each, each department has a meeting with them, and they tell them how they, how they, you know, how they operate. So we'd like to congratulate those who were in 2016 participants, have them please come up as I call their name to receive their certificate, and then remain standing up here. We'll do a group picture. So we'll start out with Valerie, Yuri? Congratulations. Okay, go to shake again. Shake, shake, shake. Second, Judy Byrd. Congratulations, Judy. Terry Collins. Congratulations, Terry. Israel Gutierrez. Is Israel here? I don't see Israel. So Melissa Ortega. Carlos Ortiz. Congratulations, Carlos. Maria Trinidad Padilla. Congratulations. Caitlin, oh, no, Palale. Say it.
Thank you. Palale.
Palale, okay. There she is. Congratulations. You can do this right this time? Okay. Shake my hand. Thank you. Congratulations. Did I say it right that time? Greg Vandenberg. Burge. Burge. Vandenbergge. Right? I want to get it right. Vandenbergge. That's what I started with, and I changed it. Congratulations, Jules. Congratulations, Victoria. And this is our graduation class, our 15th graduation class. So, so we want to do a group photo, like this? Oh, they have to get, yeah, we have to get close. Do you want us to come forward of the, of this? Okay, forward of this. Everybody forward. Short people in the front. Yeah. Your friends, your friends to come down and take pictures? Superintendent? Oh, they want, Dr. Vodichka to come down and take picture with them, too. I'll stand back here. I can peek right through the hole right here.
Mary, you should be in the front.
Oh, you guys. It's okay. Okay. So now we have a proclamation, because this is a very special time right now. So this is your proclamation. Here, I'll give this to you. We'll open it up so you can see the pretty part. There you go. So, November 28, 2016, has been designated Vista Unified School District's Centennial Recognition Day. On November 28, 1916, the Vista, Delpi, and Buenos School Districts voted unanimously to form the Vista Union School District. On February 14, 1917, the district passed the first bond measure of $8,000 to build a new school building in downtown Vista. In the 1920s, the Delpi and Buenos schools were closed. In 1930, Lincoln School opened, where the Vista Civic Center is now located, and Vista School was renamed Jefferson School. District enrollment was only 373 students at the time. That's in 1930. So, whereas in 1935, the voters in the district decided to form a unified school district and build a high school in Vista. The Vista Union High School District was formed the following year with the same trustees as Elementary District. Later that year, the two districts were combined into the Vista Unified School District. And whereas the first superintendent was Sherman H. Freeman, who led the district from 1936 to 1947, his successor, William Paul, oh dear, Schlechtie? Schlechtie? Schlechtie, held the position for the next 22 years. Whoa. So whereas today, Vista Unified School District has 21,977 students enrolled in 29 schools and employs over 2,100 staff members under the leadership of Superintendent Dr. Devon Vodichka. Whereas since its founding in 1916, Vista Unified School District has strived for and maintained the highest standards of teaching excellence. Throughout 2016, Vista Unified Schools, parents, students, educators, and community members will participate in activities and ceremonies to commemorate 100 years of its history and accomplishments. So therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and members of the Vista City Council congratulate the Vista Unified School District on their celebration of 100 years of educational excellence, and do hereby proclaim Monday, November 28, 2016, as Vista Unified School District Day in the City of Vista. Congratulations to the school district.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Very nice. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, great. Okay. So with that, it takes us to our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless some item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a Request to Speak card to the Clerk's secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. And we have items C1 through C7 are on our consent calendar. And I don't have any speaker slips for today, so I would entertain a motion, or if anybody from the council wanted to pull something. Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I would like to pull C7, please.
Okay. And I entertain a motion for the balance.
Yes, I'm sorry. And I do move that we approve the balance of the consent calendar as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Would you like a presentation on C7?
I, I don't necessarily need a presentation, but I do have a couple of clarifications that I would like to make for the record, if that's okay.
Do you want us to vote? We need to vote on the balance first. Okay, so please cast your votes for the balance of the consent calendar. Okay, that motion passes unanimously with Councilwoman Campbell excused. So I'll turn it over, I guess, to Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item C7 before us tonight is regarding the land acquisition for properties at 230, 234, and 240 Paula Vista Drive, and three vacant parcels on Natal Way. And this is one of those instances where we've had some feedback from the community on this property. We've had some phone calls and some emails. And there's one underlying theme through all of the emails that we've received, and that is people asking that instead of spending this money on purchasing this property, that it would be better spent purchasing the Creekside property, which is over by Fraser Farms, where the proposed apartments are going to be built. I would just like to clarify that that property at Creekside is not available for purchase, that it has already been sold, or...
Or in escrow right now.
Or in escrow right now, correct?
That's correct.
So I, I think it's important that people understand that that property is no longer on the market for sale at this time. And then the second thing that has come up is that that particular parcel of land might not be best suited for an active park setting. And that is something that we are still looking at, the logistics of the park. But nonetheless, purchasing that property does, in fact, fulfill some of the city's goals and the council's goals in decreasing blight and enhancing the image of the City of Vista. And that being one of the main arteries coming into and out of Vista, it's important that we take that land. And if we do find, in our analysis and logistics studies, that an active park setting might not be the best use of that land, given its location, that still using it as beautification is something that we have on the table at our discretion. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make those two clarifications for the record, Madam Mayor. And with that, I would move that we approve item C7 as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, I would ask to cast your votes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Hamm.
That motion passes unanimously with Councilwoman Campbell excused. Let's see. There are no public hearings scheduled tonight, so that moves us on to our discussion item. We just have one tonight, and that's our fiscal year 2016-17 First Quarter Financial Report. And our Finance Director Treasurer, Lauren Worm, will provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. The fiscal year 2016 to 17 First Quarter Report serves as a summary and comparison of general fund budget to actual results. The report includes proposed operating and capital budget adjustments, as explained in Exhibit 2 on pages 8 and 9 of the Agenda Report. The report also includes recommended personnel changes, which are detailed in Exhibit 10 on pages 25 and 26. General fund revenues and expenses are consistent with budgetary expectations for the year, or for the first quarter. Significant amounts of cash receipts are not received evenly throughout the year, so we would not expect to be at 25% at this time. There are 13 budget adjustments proposed at this time per Exhibits 2 and 9A. This includes the replacement of the previous public safety radio system. In anticipation of the known replacement, the city did save up for years and set aside funds and reserves, so that when the purchase was available, and the time was right, then they were available for the purchase. Staff is requesting the use of the reserves in the amount of 1.275 million to purchase this new communication system. Another proposed budget adjustment is related to the parking lot development at Broadway and South Citrus Avenue, which was approved by the City Council with the fiscal year 2014 and 2015 Fourth Quarter Report. Staff is requesting the transfer of those reserves at this time in the amount of 1.925 million, so that the capital expenditures are available for spending. Please note the budget table on page 2 of the Agenda Report. The last item should reflect a negative of 160,276 amount, rather than the 155,276 as shown. The combined amounts of 85,085 and 75,191 totaling the 160,276 are properly reflected in both Exhibit 2 on page 9 and in the resolution of Exhibit 9A on page 24. This proposed adjustment is utilizing existing amounts for the widening of the west side of Emerald Drive along the new Starbucks frontage. This represents combined amounts of the 85,085 of utility undergrounding in lieu fees, as well as 75,191 of deferred street construction fees paid by Starbucks. The recommendation is to receive and file the fiscal year 2016 to 17 First Quarter Report, adopt the resolution amending the fiscal year 2016 and 2017 operating and capital budgets, and adopt the resolution amending the citywide classification and compensation index, and repealing the provisions of any resolutions in conflict herewith. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify, the use of reserves here does not, is not emergency reserves. They're, they're reserves at the end of the year.
That is correct.
Okay. Anybody? I don't see, seeing any speakers, I would ask for, oh, Deputy Mayor Rigby.
I was just going to move that we accept this report as presented.
Okay. Councilwoman Aguilera.
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for the work they put into that. I know that it was kind of hectic towards the end, and I appreciate the changes that were made. So with that, I'll second it.
Okay. Seeing no other speakers, I'm going to ask for you, to cast your votes. That vote passed unanimously with Councilwoman Campbell excused. And with that, we're going to go to oral communications. I have two, two speakers. The first one is, let's see, I'm going to look at this. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Ritter and council members. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Carol Congleton, and I'm the Operations Director for the Vista Free Health Screening Event. This free medical camp is organized under the auspices of the Sacha Sai International Organization, a spiritual and service organization that has a presence in 126 countries. The organization is a completely volunteer organization. There are no salaries, no dues, no fees, no soliciting for contributions or donations. Our service activities include medical camps. And here in Southern California, there are four medical camps that we organize yearly: Corona, Oxnard, Huntington Park, and Vista. Participants volunteer their time and services freely in these camps, and no advertising is allowed. In each of these medical camps, community partners join in. For instance, in Corona, the Corona Unified School District provides the facilities for the camp, Corona High School, and the City Council supports and participates in the planning of the camp. At Oxnard, St. John's Regional Medical Center partners with us to provide services, and Our Lady of Guadalupe Church hosts the camp in their church and school. In Huntington Park, the Huntington Park City Council supports and assists us, and local hospitals join in to help out. In Vista, Brightwood College provides support and hosts the event at their Vista Campus. And many of the volunteers at the camp are Brightwood students, faculty, and staff. Vista Community Clinic assists us with outreach in the community, and they service our follow-up clinic after the camp. This year, the Vista Free Health Screening Camp was held on June 4, and it was our fourth annual event at Brightwood College. There were 228 patients and over 800 patient visits to the various departments at the camp. And the volunteers included 22 physicians and over 270 volunteers, excuse me. All of the services were provided completely free of charge to the patients. We're here today to let you know about our camp and to ask if you can help us assist us with outreach in the community by letting our community know about these services, especially the people who need it most. Be helpful in the Vista schools and local churches and low-income communities. And there are also other areas where we could use help, if, if you are able, bus service to the camp on the day of the event, and local hospitals who might want to join us and contribute their services.
I, I need you to wrap up here.
Sorry. If you're interested in more information, we'd be glad to give a 10-minute presentation. Let us know. The next Vista camp is on June 3, 2017. We'd be happy to have you come for a VIP tour or to volunteer at the event. Thank you so much for your time and your attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Howell. Did you have a question? Next speaker is Jim Howell.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, council members and staff. My name is Jim Howell. I live at 2333 Karaoke Place in Vista. I'm here tonight representing the Somerset Glen Homeowners Association, that I'm currently the president of. And I presented a petition to the city clerk that I think is being passed out at this time, and it's been signed by 14 of my fellow property owners there. We are generally located off San Clemente, and in the foothills just east of the Vista Historical Museum. I think most of you are familiar with the location. So it's just the residential area in the back. This past summer, there's been a growing number of outdoor events at the museum that have included loud amplified music. And I know that some of the council members recently attended an afternoon event at this venue, and we have no objections to small controlled events, such as the barbecue that I believe, again, some of you may have attended. However, there were nighttime events this summer at the museum. The first one was on Saturday, August 13, and then on Saturday, September 17, that were extremely loud, disruptive, and objectionable to myself and my neighbors. In addition to the loud noise, there was an excessive number of partygoers. I don't have a count of how many were there, but if you think of a party the scale that would fill the parking lot at the museum, and all of the parking lots across the street at the middle, middle school, if I had to estimate, I would say there was 400 to 500 in attendance at this small outdoor venue. As council knows, it's only a small outdoor location, and these nighttime events were totally out of control, in our opinion. There was lack of security and crowd control. So as a result of the two events, I attended the August meeting with the Vista Historical Society to attempt to mitigate our complaints. They insisted, I'll just cut to the bottom line, they insisted that they have the right to rent the museum, and their clients can play loud music until 10:00 PM as per city code. It was clear to me in the meeting that the historical society's primary interest is in fundraising. I saw, I specifically requested that they prohibit loud amplified music in the future events, and they flat out told me no. However, there's always a ray of hope. They did promise to better control the volume during future events and to cut the volume to 50% after 9:00 PM. So I left that meeting feeling that I had accomplished my goal to some extent. So last Saturday night, September 22, we experienced another mega loud event. They have the loudest DJ of the summer and something like a 10-piece band with an extreme percussion unit. And mind you, I live probably a block and a half away up the hill, but because we're against the hill, I think it just really resonates to...
Sir, I, I need you to wrap up, if you could.
Okay, Mayor, I'm almost there. So about 9 o'clock, the sheriffs were called by multiple neighbors, and the event ended. So I believe that the society members have the best of intentions. I know they're good people, but I think we definitely have different priorities. And their position that the neighborhood must endure the louder parties until 10 o'clock is simply outrageous. We bought our homes adjacent to a, to a museum, not expecting to be next to our, next door to an outdoor nightclub.
I need you, I need you, I really need you to wrap up, if you could, please.
So I'm here to, tonight, to ask council's assistants to start, stop the loud nighttime parties at the museum, and, and the museum is owned by the City of Vista. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We, we can't comment on that today, but we'll take it under consideration, and the city manager's taking notes. Okay? Okay. Okay, with that, that's the end of our oral communications. And so I'm down to remarks. So I guess I'll, I'll do my comments here, and then we'll do that. So my things are, first off, congratulations to the artists on display in our gallery outside, the chambers out here. The new exhibit is called Vista Visions. It opened today, it runs through December 29. The juried exhibition of more than 30 works represents a variety of media, including photography, paint, ink, and collage. The Vista Chamber Business Showcase will be on Wednesday, November 2, from 4:00 to 7:00, in the Civic Center's Morris Vance Community Room. And more information is available on that at vistachamber.org. And that's actually, that's actually next week, next Wednesday. The City Public Arts Commission is seeking entries for its first youth art exhibit at the Vista Civic Gallery. If you live in Vista or attend a Vista Unified School, you're eligible to enter. And entries are due December 27. So go to vistaspublicart.com for more of that information. And next Monday is Halloween. So let's keep our trick-or-treaters safe by following the safety tips, such as wearing reflective clothes or tape, staying in groups, and carrying a cellphone for quick communication. More Halloween safety tips are online at safekids.org. And with that, I will go down the line, and Councilmember Aguilera? Do you have any?
I do not. Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin? Deputy Mayor Rigby?
I just want to say, at the, I think it was last weekend, Vista Unified School District had their art fair on Main Street downtown, and I, I spent the afternoon there. It was a beautiful event. It was very, very well attended. It was very crowded. It was so well attended, with a lot of art exhibits and a lot of entertainment and a lot of speakers. So that was a really great event, and I just wanted to give a shout out and congratulations to VUSD, the parents, the students, the staff, the superintendent. I see he's left already, but you did a really great job, and that, that was a wonderful event for the city. And then we also had our, I think it was our third annual Craft and Makers Fair Marketplace this last weekend, which was very well attended, from people not only through Vista and North County, but... County, but there were people from Los Angeles, Orange County, and Riverside County that were both shoppers and vendors. So again, that was another really great event that we had here in Vista, so congratulations. And I know the Randalls had a booth there, and I'm hoping it was successful for you as well. So I just want to say, we've had some really great events here in Vista, and I was honored to be a part of them, even if it was just in attendance, and Vista's really doing some great things, so thank you for participating and making these things happen for us.
Thank you. Our city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Three things. We're canceling the November 8 city council meeting, that is Election Day, and so we'll be canceling the meeting. We will be holding a special meeting on Tuesday, November 15, in its place, so we'll post that accordingly. City offices will be closed on Friday, November 11, in observance of Veterans Day. There will be no delay in trash service, but we will be closed. And then the last thing, I would like to have our sheriff's captain Chuck Senamo and our new sheriff's lieutenant Mike Muncy come up, just to introduce Lieutenant Muncy to you, so you get to know who he is.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As you know, changes happen in our office. Staffing changes happen all the time. We had Lieutenant Clayton Lisk, who's been out on some medical injury leave for a while. In his stead, we've now acquired Lieutenant Mike Muncy. I'll let Mike introduce himself and talk a little bit about himself.
Hi, good evening. Again, my name is Mike Muncy. I've been a sheriff's deputy for 30-plus years now. I've been a lieutenant for about eight years, currently signed at the field operations patrol side of it. I've worked pretty much everywhere. You could work in the county SWAT for six years, weapons trading, many different places. And I'm glad to be here, and it's gonna be an interesting time. It's a new place for me. I've never worked here before, so I'm looking forward to it.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
From Vista, so we're glad to have you here. Thank you, Captain. How about our attorney, city attorney? Anything tonight?
Happy Halloween.
Oh, yeah. How about our city clerk? Kathy? No? Okay. With that, nothing else, and we are adjourned. Yeah. 6:04.